Good morning and welcome to the city council meeting today, August 22. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the row call.
Councilwoman Latham.
President.
Councilwoman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Back.
Here.
Councilman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Smith to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's bow our hearts to the prayer. Father, we come to you now in the humblest way we know how. Come about here as in humbled hearts, realizing we are to acknowledge you in all our ways. You were direct our paths. We need your leading, we need your guiding, we need your direction. We dare not lean to our own understanding. Father, even on today, help us to be mindful of our constituents, those who are homeless, those who are without. Jesus is always on the side of the marginalized. And God, we ought to be our brother and our sister's keeper. So we thank you for our mayor, we thank you for this council, we thank you for every department here that's been working diligently the past few weeks and months to keep our city moving and keep it safe. And Father, we thank you for this meeting today. Allow your Holy Spirit to lead God and direct us. We ask it all in the matchless name of Jesus. We pray in all that agrees. Say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Works Committee work session and city council meeting held on August 15. So move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Item six, the Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of August 11 through the 17. So move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item seven is reserved for proclamations and commendations. And today, I'd like to welcome and recognize some special guests we have today. We have Coach Ali Smith and Coach Brett Ellis. They're with the Gadsden City Titan Football Team. And four of their players are here today and they're going to be recognized. And we're just glad you guys are here. You're our only high school football team in the City of Gadsden. We support you, we're behind you 100%. Welcome to City Hall and the city council meeting. And I'll turn it over to Mayor Ford.
Thank you, Mr. President. Coach Smith, if you'd come present, please. This is Ali Smith, longtime friend of mine. And he was the only pitcher, only person that would take a picture of me when I was running for office, so Ali, I'll never forget it. But this is Coach. I was Googling, and you men in the audience, football players, I was Googling, what does a Titan mean? It's a person or thing of very great strength, intellect, or importance. And this whole council and this mayor and this administration, we are pro Titans. And we're proud to have you, win or lose, which we know we're going to win, because I know the hard work you put in, because I helped raise Brett. He was about 110 pounds before he started taking those supplement, I'm just kidding. Now he runs a CrossFit gym and he's strong as a mule. But we went through Eddie Nichols, the same breakaway, and First Baptist Church of Gadsden. And I'm glad to see Brett's on board and y'all's workout ethic. But would y'all please come forward and we'd like for you to introduce yourself and just say something, please. Coach, we'll start with you.
Thank you guys for having us on behalf of our superintendent, Mr. Reddick, our assistant superintendent, Keith Blackwell, and our principal, Joel Gullig. Just want to say thank you guys for having us up here and just allowing us to give an opportunity to let you split a faces with some names and different things like that. Our kids been working since January 6. For us, you know, kickoff of football is this coming Friday, but for our kids, our guys started in January 6. So, you know, football doesn't have an off season nowadays. It's not like when I played. Our kids have a winter workout, they have a spring workout, then they go through summer. Now we getting ready to go into fall. We have 112 kids, nine through 12. They've done an excellent job and we just appreciate you guys coming out and supporting us and coming around a little bit and get to know our kids, not just on the field, but off the field as well. And that's one of the things we would like to thank the mayor, Mr. John Moore. A lot of our kids have really gotten to know him and they see him, so they putting kind of face with a name. So things like that really matter with our young people. And again, we'd just like to say thank you guys.
Thank you.
Hey, how y'all doing? I'm Dre Kirkpatrick Jr. I play safety. We very excited for Friday. Hope y'all come out and support, go Titans.
Can I say Roll Tide? Y'all are always saying, y'all are always saying a word. Roll Tide.
Roll Tide, Roll Tide.
How's it going? My name is Luke Lawdrum. I play quarterback. Thank you guys for having us and we're really excited for Friday, so y'all show up.
Thank you.
I'm Matthew Sparks. I'm a junior, I play quarterback and receiver, and I appreciate y'all for having us.
I'm Jerrab Rashad, I play defensive end. I hope y'all come out and watch.
I appreciate y'all having us. Excited for us being here today and just glad that the city's behind the Titans. I think our hot city high school and our football team, our athletic programs are vital to the success of the city. And so I think as we work hand in hand, that's just a great thing to build on and to continue to build what we're wanting to do in the city and what we're trying to accomplish at the high school. So thank you guys, go Titans.
We're going to get a picture up here. I've got it up here.
Thank you.
Dre, you stand over there by District 7.
Get the kicker, yeah, it's a real kicker.
There goes Councilman Back.
Yeah, I might just beat up there. That might be a good thing.
Just line in the gap.
There you go. Play the gap.
If you can't see the camera, the camera can't see you, so move. Councilman Smith. Yeah, there you go. Councilwoman Latham. There you go. All right, count to three. One, two, three. Give a one, one, two. All right.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
Good job, guys.
Thank you.
Coach.
Good luck, man. Glad to see you.
So, thank you, bro. Appreciate y'all, man.
Thank you.
Appreciate the coaches and players taking time out of their busy schedule to come be recognized today. And encourage everybody to support the Titans. Go to Titan Stadium. We've got games all fall, so this will be a great chance to show our support for our students and our football team.
So, Mr. President, I have one more.
Yes, sir.
If Ms. Shalonda and Ms. Francis, would you please come forward? So, this is, I'm sorry I had not prepared anything, but I just want to say what happened. So, one day, we were up here working late, John Moore, and I don't know if we were working or having fun, but we're up here working late and I saw this car pull out that looked just like John Moore's. So I got up behind him and blue lighted him and gave him heck and started everything at the red light. And I thought, what is John doing? He won't move. So finally, I pulled up to the side and I rolled down my window at these two ladies. And I asked them, I said, oh, I'm sorry. Of course, I then recovered. And I said, I'm just making sure y'all are okay. But I asked them, I got talking to them, we became friends. And I asked them, I said, what are y'all doing? And I think this is important for all of us. They said, we come up here every Wednesday, most Tuesdays. And they sit out front by the flagpoles and pray for the city.
Oh, wow.
And for the council. So, I mean.
Amen. Thank you.
But I want them to know.
Yeah, that's the end of it for that.
But I want them to know how important that was to me. And of course, then I felt about this big. But no, we just got to be friends and we know the guy that works with Eddie Nichols, their pastor, is also a good friend of ours and he helped set this up. But I just asked him if they would come and be recognized and let y'all know and everybody in this city know that we have two prayer warriors on Tuesdays by the flagpole. So I'd like to turn it over to her. You said your prayers go a little higher, right?
There we go.
Good morning, everybody. I am Frances Core. Most people in the city know me now, the younger people know me now as Mother Frances Core. And we are partners at the People Place Church under the pastors of Pastor Tametrick Dillon. And she called me one day, because I have been kind of incapacitated from doing anything, and asked me, said, "Mother, would you go with me to pray?" I said, "Girl." That was my gesture when she asked me, she couldn't see me. And I said, "Yes, thank you, Jesus." And so we started praying every Tuesday. If we missed Tuesday, we come Thursdays. And we just go all over the city, courthouse, Eddie Nichols, Dream Center. We did go for the, when we was praying for the schools, we went up to Sardas. So God has given us the initiative and the patience and the wherever to pray, because prayer is one of the most important weapons that we have. And certainly, it is needed in our city, our state, and all over the world. And so that's what we do and we enjoy it. We take pleasure in doing so. And I thank God he has allowed me to live these 80 years and just be a service, just a servant. I don't have to have a name or a title, but just be the servant of the Most High God. And I love it, I love it. Thank God for the council people and Mayor Ford, even when he was in the state, yes, that was my number one person to vote for. In our state, I don't believe it has ever been the same. But councilperson Latham watched her grow up as a little girl playing the piano for the young people in the city. And Pastor Steve, yes, loved, have gone to his ministry many times, enjoyed it with the ladies, Bible study, book study, book club, whatever his wife had. I was a part, because I was driving then. Now it's kind of get to me, I don't drive, but praise God. Not that I can't. I just, I chauffeured for so many years for six kids in every place, so is there a time to drive Miss Daisy? But anyway, thank you, Mayor Ford, for inviting us.
Can we get a picture, Mr. President?
Yes, please do. This is great.
We're going up here on the stage.
I'm glad it wasn't cheap, that place is like it has always been.
Count three. One, two, three. Give a one, one, two, three.
That's great. Thank y'all so much. Thank you so much for coming. Appreciate your prayers.
Mr. President, I just want to say to...
Yes, sir.
I just want to say to Ms. Francis in the group here, I'm very, very thankful that you guys pray over this city council. And I'll also say that I don't blame you. If I had the mayor pull up and blue light me, I'd say I was praying over the building too.
Oh, that's good. Well, thank you so much. What a special time.
I was just praying, officer, just praying.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Ford. That was the best one so far in nine months. It really was. That was great. Thank you. All right, we will move on in our agenda today. Item eight is unfinished business. We have none today. Item nine is a resolution authorizing agreement with Municipal Intercept Services. This is for collection of delinquent debts owed to the city after other efforts have been exhausted. This program is administered through the Alabama League of Municipalities. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. So move. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, we sat through a training seminar on this. And again, this is administered by the Alabama League of Municipalities, which represents all the cities in Alabama for the most part. And essentially, all it says is if we've tried to collect on a debt that's owed to the city, we can also turn it over to the state and there's some ways that they can collect, help us collect on that debt. So that's all it is.
Thank you. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 10 comes under the first readings. This is an ordinance authorizing conveyance of property located at North Sixth Street to the Greater Gadsden Housing Authority. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading and the council will vote on it next week. Item 11, under first readings, this is amending ordinance number zero dash 47 dash 23 regarding managed care of dogs and cats. This is to require owners to register and obtain licenses for dogs and cats over six months of age, establishes a permit for commercial breeders, and fines for owners of dogs and cats captured at large that are unlicensed or with expired licenses. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading and the council will vote on it next week. Item 12 is under first readings. This is an ordinance, it's amending city code section 46 dash 97, section B4 of the noise ordinance regarding commercial deliveries adjacent to residential areas. This specifies that such activity occurring outside the hours of 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM may not exceed 70 decibels as read by a sound level meter at any point that is normally occupied as a residence. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading and the council will vote on it next week. Item 13 is new business, and I believe we have a few today.
Yes, Mr. President, I've got a couple. The first one is routed from the Planning Department. And this is a resolution authorizing agreement with E-Property Plus. And at this point, I'd like to ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business after a thorough explanation by Councilman Robinson.
All right, there's a motion. Do we have a second to suspend it? All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt. Clerk, will you take the vote? Councilwoman Latham, second.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
And the last one, Mr. President, is a resolution authorizing application for airport improvement funding assistance from the State of Alabama Department of Transportation and the Federal Aviation Administration. This is, since we are a sponsor, for lack of a better term, of the airport here, the airport does this every year. They go and try to obtain state and federal grant money so that they can help improve the airport here. And so because we are a partner with the airport, we have to actually authorize these applications as well, so it's kind of a standard thing. So given that some of the deadlines for those grant applications are coming up, I would like to ask that we suspend the rules today and consider this under new business so that that application process can move forward.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution under new business today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt, please. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I think that's all the new business for today. We'll move to section, item 14, department reports, committees, boards. Mr. Mummets coming forward.
Good morning.
Morning.
So first off, I want to say that the National Weather Service has placed us under heat advisory through 9:00 tomorrow night, so our cooling centers in the city are open. The Salvation Army is 1 to 6. Day guests are invited for supper at 5:00. Right now, the overnight shelter is at capacity, but they will, they are open. People come in and cool off, get some water. Guys to Public Library, all three branches, and then also the Freedom Center as well. We'll have these hours and everything posted on our Facebook page for people. Just keep in mind, you know, the heat index is looking to be anywhere between 105 and Be aware of, you know, your heat-related illnesses with heat exhaustion and heat stroke. And make sure you take plenty of breaks, drink plenty of fluid, find some shade. The other item that I, or the other announcement I wanted to make, a lot of you know Mark Golden. Mark's been with the EMA a little over five years and he's also got quite a number of years at the Gadsden Newspaper. But Mark has officially accepted the position of Deputy Director of EMA. I'm excited for his appointment. He and I work very well together and us two, along with Ann Payne, will move the EMA forward.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to Mark.
Thank you. Councilman Avery, I left a box in your office that I think you'll be happy to see.
All right. Thank you so much. Are there any other departments? I was hoping Jen Wethington was going to be here. I love the commercials that I'm seeing on social media for our soccer league and things.
Soccer signups. We've had a lot sign up.
That's good. That's great. It really is. All right, we'll go to remarks by mayor and council. Mayor Ford, we'll let you start us off.
So we have kicked off our app development and expect to launch publicly October 16, 2023. We're going to be making our rounds of our meetings in each district, and so we're trying to have that done before we have our meetings in their districts so we can actually promote the app at the same time. We submitted a grant for a historic arts trail through the National Endowment for the Arts Civil Rights with our grant writing consultants. Waiting to hear back from that. We finalize, or we are finalizing a draft on the HR handbook and we'll send it out to the employee feedback, for employee feedback and submitting it to the council for approval. I want to thank Councilwoman Minatra again for her hard work. We have set up meetings with our master plan consultants to update mayor's office and the council on the progress. Budget being finalized. We have a lot of budget requests that are, we're still finalizing. We're going through it today, tomorrow, the weekend, to meet our timeline, as what y'all have used to in the past for the previous two council members and what we're supposed to be doing. I would like to keep everything in check here to make everyone please realize we're not only updating a manual, turning five manuals into one, redoing an employee handbook, redoing a pay scale, and coming with a budget, all within 30 to 45 days. So this is a feat I don't think's ever been accomplished, and it's not me, I promise you, it's the staff and our finance department, what they're doing. The Sixth Street property has been a topic of discussion. I'm excited to offer a way to better serve the residents who live at Colley Homes, the family and children, we have a space dedicated to them through Greater Gadsden Housing Authority. The Board of Education tore down the public park. We can't help what they do, that's their business. But this is a safer option than leaving it as the unused disrepair pool facility. We can still work on a playground in that area, a splash pad option, but it does not have to be in that current location and cannot be in that current location, but it can benefit the residents at the expense of the Housing Authority for the clubhouse and what they've come to us. That was almost a prayer answered. We are, the pool continues to be in a hot topic in the community. We are looking at all options of a pool, where to locate it, the price, the initial estimate we got back, unlike one gentleman who likes to come to the council, was a little over $6 million. So we are looking to cut what we had in, you know, half and not have all the bells and whistles, but we're looking for a pool for the community. I will like to let everyone know Oxford just built one and had to shut it down due to the fact they couldn't find lifeguards. So lifeguards are a problem, but we realize it is a quality of life issue and we are looking for that and looking for the location, what's feasible to benefit most of the residents in Gadsden. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks, Mayor Ford. Appreciate that. Councilwoman Latham?
Thank you. President Back, thank you to those who are here in person today and those who are viewing our council meeting by way of social media. I do want to say congratulations to the Titans Football Team and we look forward to a very successful season. Want to say this to Mother Core and Ms. Shalonda, thank you so much for your diligence in just being led by the Spirit to cover our city, to cover our mayor and the officials of our city. The scripture says, "What you do in secret, he will reward you openly." And so I don't want you to think today is your reward. There's a bigger reward coming for just being humble to do that. And thank you for what you're doing and what you do in the community. I do want to say on the heels of that, the mayor is dangerous with that truck and blue I guess I'll stop right there. He told me to be careful. All right, so I do have a couple of announcements that I would like to get in. Let me ask Councilman Minatra, do you have the one for the 29th? Okay, so I'll just make this quick announcement. There is a Board of Education meeting on tonight at 5:00, which will discuss, there would be discussion of, as we know, our superintendent, present superintendent is, will be retiring effective August 31st. And so there is a meeting tonight at 5:00. And they're asking, we're asking parents, anyone that's concerned, to be at that meeting on tonight, as well as there is a meeting, what's next meeting, Concerned Citizens for Education. Join us as we collaborate, inform, and share questions and concerns about our school system. This meeting is being held on Thursday, August 24th at 5:30 PM at Emma Sampson Homes Info Center. And so that's at 2:13, A North 21st, 21st Street. So they're asking for you to, asking for you to attend that meeting as well. Thank you, Mayor, for everything that you're doing, the mayor's office, city council, for what you are doing, and the city at large. It's just good to be able to do something and enjoy doing it and working with other people, to see our city become an even greater place to live and to see us work together. We're stronger together. We may not always agree, but we can surely agree to disagree and still walk in love, joy, peace, and unity. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to say, I don't know about you all, but I love what I see going on in our city. I can't help it, I'm an optimist. And when I ride across that bridge and look down through the Coosam and can see all the bridges at one time, how clean it looks, y'all, it looks amazing. So some great things are happening in the city. We just talked about some paving projects that we just finished. We all aware, we still got work to do, still got cleanup to do. We got the trucks spread it out in centralized locations, working their way to other districts, but they're going to get to your area soon. I'm just excited to see what's going on. I met with the CEO of Riverview Hospital about... I met with the CEO of Riverview Hospital about, maybe about a month ago. And in that meeting, we sat down like we are now, and I asked him what's been the biggest difference. He said, "We shifted the culture." What we're trying to do here, I guess, is shift the culture. When you ride and see this G on the back of all these vehicles being changed over now, I still volunteer and drive the school bus. When I pull up at that school, I can tell you exactly what day Twin City banner came off that press box, and the big G went up. And I wanted those kids to hear it before they left. So when we go out to the game on Friday, let's go out there and represent the only one high school that we have. Let's continue to push that brand every chance we get. Hopefully, we get it back up here soon behind the council, hint, clue, clue. Real soon, back up here behind the council. But I just want to say to the mayor, thank you for your leadership. Thank you to the council. Thank you, Councilwoman Minatra, spearheading the meeting 8:30 this morning. Want to wish Ms. Ivor happy birthday, y'all. We didn't get a chance to do it last week. Councilman Williams told me to always acknowledge Ms. Ivor. She the key. So I want to just tell you again, happy birthday. But thank you for everything. One other thing, we got food distribution going on, distribution going on right now as I speak at our church. You may not need it, but if you know anybody that's hungry, need food, just send them up to New Destiny before they're finished unloading. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Councilman Avery?
Mr. President, today District 3 Community Meeting will be at 6:00 p.m. at Carver Community Center. For all that are interested, our main goal is to finish up the survey that is there as it relates to grow gas. And the other thing is, is for those business owners to go over the application as it relates to the resources that are available for the small businesses. There are some readings that need to be read as you look at that application. So like, for, just give a quick example, like if you're a realtor, I think that you wouldn't apply, wouldn't be able to, wouldn't qualify for those resources. There are some other businesses there that it stated. And so I wanted to be clear that we read the information, that we understand and we know. So we'll go through this there at that meeting. We'll also talk about the importance of my next announcements, which is the Community Emergency Response Team, which is to help your community and your neighbors during time of need become a member of CERT. And CERT is a disaster medical training, fire safety training, search and rescue training, team organization, emergency preparedness, disaster psychology, and terrorism awareness. And so this is a very important initiative that is going on in our community to be held at Carver Community Center. There are some dates, first date that it will be, that it will begin would be, the first session will begin August 29th, and that's from 5:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. So make sure your community churches, your organizations, family, friends, get a hold of this, these dates. Come to the first one to get the rest of the dates, or go to our Facebook page, and you'll see the rest of the posting as it relates to the CERT program. District 3 Final Community, as it relates to the summer, the Final Community Cleanup will be August 27th, this coming Sunday, from 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. As, kudos to Gadsden City High School. Their football team came out to our first cleanup. Our second cleanup was delayed due to a family emergency. So we want to thank them, their football team, basketball team, and other team players, teams as it relates to the Gadsden City school system, as well as the Fourth Street community and other organizations that came out. All you need, all we asking you to bring is some extra dehydration. We have the pickup sticks, we have the vests, we have the bags. We have everything else you need. But except for if anyone has some extra trucks and trailers that you would like to bring out, then that's to help to collect the bags as we fill them up, and we won't have to carry them to our drop site. Again, that's this Sunday, August 27th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. And my final is wanting to give a recommendation, or just a commendation, rather, to Shiloh Baptist Church. All of those entities that came out to play a part into that community giveaway and that alertness, the Fire Department, the Sheriff Department, Police Department. Man, I didn't, I shouldn't have named. There were some others. The municipal judges that came out to that program. I think the kids had a good time. I think the information was well received. And so big ups to Shiloh for the efforts and to all of the other organizations and community churches that are doing things as it relates to helping our citizens that are in need. Please, ma'ams and sirs, be very, I guess, aware of your seniors in this heat as well as your children. And we can also include the animals. This heat is something different for the city. And so we want to make sure that we highlight those cooling stations and that we also, if we can, make sure that we, make sure our, just check on your neighbors. Go and just check on especially our seniors, making sure that they're staying cool. They have things that they need to remain cool and hydrated. Final, literally final, I went to go see Mr. Suttles, Larry Suttles. I think we've all know who Mr. Suttles is, even if you tuned in to the previous administrations. Mr. Suttles is doing well. He's being Mr. Suttles even under his condition. And so he did want a message to be relayed to the mayor and council that he'll be back. And so, but again, he's doing well. But he did also, wanted to also let the council and mayor know that he had us in his thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson?
Yes, Mr. President, just again, like last week, a point of personal privilege. I just want to let the mayor know and the police chief know that each week I pray in front of Blackstone Pizza Kitchen, Back Forty Beer Company, Harp and Clover, and Current Market and Deli. So y'all, so y'all just know that that's what's going on if y'all see me walking out of there. Just kidding. Thank you to the beautiful young ladies that come up here and pray over us. It's such a special thing, and it's lost, I think, on a lot of us just how, how many people there are in this community that do pray over us and watch over us. You know, we do this invocation every week, and we all ask for guidance and the vision of the Lord in our day-to-day activities. But I don't think you guys realize how much we interact throughout the week with the spiritual leaders in this community and the people that are praying for us every day. And it doesn't go unnoticed. And I can certainly assure you that it's something that impacts me and my leadership style and the decisions that I make. So thank you all, to everybody, for that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Minatra?
I just wanted to announce that a week from today, that's the 28th of August, at the venue, there will be a program for parents of elementary school children. And the program is designed to help educate the parents as to the new testing that just started this school year for specifically third graders. And that new testing is basically going to be done throughout the school year. And at the end of that third grade, they will be tested again for promotion to the fourth grade. But one of the basics is the reading skill set. And so this program next Tuesday night from 6:00 to 7:30 will be hosted by our council as well as the Board of Education. And we just want to educate the parents and help them with the tools that are necessary, that are out there to help our kids be able to pass these reading and math skills. Because we want those kids to get promoted to the fourth grade. So that program is actually going to be provided with some babysitting. The Gadsden City Titan cheerleaders are going to babysit for parents that need to bring other family members. And dinner's going to be provided. So we're just encouraging parents to register at your elementary school so that we can make sure that we've got enough food. So a week from tonight at the venue at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Robinson?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to ask again the folks up in the neighborhoods next to Naukla Falls to try to be patient. We are coming to get all the trees and the limbs and all the storms damaged up. I know it seems like we're not coming, but they are working slowly. It's just taking a lot of time. And we plan on getting that cleaned up for you as soon as possible. We do know it will be cleaned up before our community meeting up there because we'll get an earful if we don't have it cleaned up by then. So we'll get that done. And I'd like to discuss this land bank. The land bank, there's a land bank, a city-owned lot, and a state lot. I'll let that slide. That's all, Mr. President. Thank you.
If you were here for the pre-council meeting, you would understand that joke. That's pretty good. I want to reiterate that you two ladies, Mama Core, and thank you all for doing what you do. That means so much. You know, we've had a lot of good Tuesdays in here since this administration has been elected and been inaugurated. I think today's the best day. We had you ladies praying for us, and now we know. And then, you know, and we had our young people here today. We had our students. I mean, those four guys play football. That's right. But y'all, they're four young people. They're four students with impressionable minds still at their age. And they have two great coaches. I've known Brett Ellis since he was a child, and I've known Ollie Smith since he first started coaching about 26 years ago. There are not two better good Christian men to be guiding and shepherding our young men than Ollie Smith and Brett Ellis and the other coaches that are up there as well. But those two were here today, and specifically, I just wanted to thank them and our school board and principals for hiring them. But thank you, ladies. Thank you all so much. You're always welcome. You're welcome here anytime that you want to come to City Hall and to City Property. And want to thank everybody else for being here. It's refreshing to see faces in the audience. This is what our city council is about, open meetings. And to have you here to listen, I think all of us up here care about your opinions. There's some pending legislation we're going to vote on next week, one specifically on cats and dogs. I've received quite a few phone calls on those. I encourage you, if you have an opinion on that, don't wait till after we vote. Call your councilperson this week. Share your thoughts, share your opinions, not only on that, but on all these things. That's how we represent you, and we need to hear from you in order to know how we should vote on certain things. So I think I speak for all of us in saying our phones are always open, our doors always open. We do want to hear from you. I concur with Councilman Avery. I first met Larry Suttles in the eighth grade at Disku Junior High School, and he hadn't changed some 47 years later. He's the same Larry that I met at Disku Junior High School. I went to visit with Larry last Tuesday after council meeting. And true to your comment, Councilman Avery, he's still the same Larry. He's recovering well and does want to come back here. And I told him we would reserve him a spot over here anytime that he's ready. But please continue to pray for Larry Suttles as he recovers from his stroke. And I know he would appreciate that. Just want to end with another thank you to the ladies, and also thank you, Mayor Ford, and your administration. We had a really good meeting this morning at 8:30 with the administration subcommittee. The combining five handbooks, led in part with Councilwoman Minatra, has gone very well. We have taken draconian-type documents that just hadn't been touched for decades and turned it into a good document for our employees and for the taxpayers of the city of Gadsden. So a lot of good things happening, y'all. A lot of good things happening. Keep praying for us, and Mayor, thank you, and to your administration as well. That's all we have today. We stand adjourned.